Good afternoon, colleagues. Many of God's blessings to each and every one of you. Iminah Chantai Shettin as Les Lus Turen Guan is back from recess at this time. We are entertaining Bill number 95-93-37 COR. Speaker, I'm sorry. Bill number 144-37 LS is introduced by Speaker Therese Amterlai. Speaker, good afternoon. You are recognized.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, colleagues. I make a motion to place Bill number 144-37 LS to the third reading file, and I'd like to discuss that motion. Bill number 144-37 LS, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, is introduced by myself and Senators Chris Barnett and Sabina Flores. It's an act, Sabina Flores Perez. It's an act to amend section 70.20 of chapter 70 and section 161.10, 161.30, and 161.50a, section 161.55, and 161.130 of chapter 161, all of Title VIII Guam code annotated relative to addressing victim confidentiality, reporting, and restitution under the criminal injuries compensation law. I'd like to discuss that motion.
Speaker, you may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. So this bill, 144, was introduced at the request of the chairperson of the Criminal Injuries Compensation Commission. The intent of this legislation is to clarify who is eligible for compensation as a victim, allow the supporting reimbursements to the fund from the court-ordered restitutions, and to maintain confidentiality of victims' records and information as required by federal law and the grant program which receives funds to compensate these victims. It was urgent because when they discovered the gap between the federal law and the grant funds and the local law, it was discovered that pursuant to the open government law, all of their meetings would have disclosed the victim's confidential information. So they have not met or adjudicated claims since October of last year. And so they expressed that there might be a backlog of victims at this point that they need to adjudicate, but they wanted to amend the law first to protect the victim's confidentiality before they did any more adjudication. So what this does is, when the open government law requires open meetings, it makes one exception for when they are discussing victims' claims, including their medical records and all of that victim's information. The bill also expands a list of crimes for which victims can be compensated and includes a new item, which is hit-and-run with injuries, failure to stop, which is a felony, and vehicular homicide. So as you know, the rest of the lists are deemed violent felonies, and these are two more additions to that list for which victims can be compensated. It also allows the court to, when they are ordering a defendant to pay restitution, there was a court case in the Supreme Court which deemed that they could not order that defendant to pay the victim's compensation fund or to reimburse it without our law being changed. So we're changing the law to allow the courts to order, as restitution, that they reimburse the victim's fund so that we can continue to give funds to additional victims. It also requires the Attorney General's Office, who is the, they do the admin and the office work for this commission, it requires them to submit an annual report together with their fiscal year budget request to the legislature so that we will know the category of awards that this commission is making, which type of crimes, and the amounts that have been given out in the preceding calendar year so that we can continue to monitor the program and see if any additional changes need to be made. There's an exception to the release of confidential information of a victim, and that is if the victim gives their prior written consent. So this would then make our local statutes consistent with federal statutes in this regard or under this program. So I ask my colleagues for their support of this bill. Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Speaker Terlai. Does anyone wish to speak on the main motion? Anyone wishing to speak? Senator Sinagastin, Joe Sinagastin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Since it was declared that it's about protecting the confidentiality of the victim, I'm in full support of that. Nobody should know about the individual other than when they go to court, then they figure it out. But in reference to protection for confidentiality on any victim, I'm in full support. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the main motion? If not, Legislative Secretary, can you please?
Sisus Masi, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon, colleagues. Madam Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in support of this bill number 144-37 LS, which was amended by the committee as proffered by the good senator from Jonah. I really want to say that when we are addressing victim's confidentiality and looking at the reporting and restitution under what we have existing today under the criminal injuries compensation law, I want to say that the added amendments to this legislation, Madam Speaker, is really, really good. I want to say that when we, when I looked at the bill and I saw that they added a couple of more, where is that? A couple of more of the crimes that would be included for such compensation, again, which included the hit-and-run with injuries, failure to stop, felony, and vehicular homicide. That was a really good added point. And then also for the annual report that the Attorney General shall, on behalf of the commission, include in the office of the Attorney General's, the fiscal year and budgetary report. Madam Speaker, I'm very, very appreciative of the intent and how this bill will bring better, a better relationship with the victims and as far as knowing that we, as a government, understand what they've gone through and based on the categories as listed, they may qualify, or what they may qualify for is intact, but more importantly, the confidentiality and making sure that their names are protected, Madam Speaker, is why I support this measure. So I thank the good author from Jonah for introducing this legislation, and I'm hoping that as part of that support that I could be included because I think that this is a good bill, and I humbly ask my colleagues, Madam Speaker, to support this measure because it really, really includes a lot of the issues and concerns that victims have brought up in the past. So thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in full support of this measure, 144-37 LS. Sisus Masi.
Sisus Masi, Vice Speaker. On the main motion, Bill number 144-37. On the main motion, Speaker Terlai, you may close.
Thank you very much, and thank you to my colleagues and to the Vice Speaker and my other colleagues who spoke on the bill. And for those who attended the public hearing, I'd like to thank them by adding them as co-sponsors as well. But before I do that, I'd like to formally thank this commission for the work that it does. It wasn't too long ago, just several years, I think right before I became a senator, when this commission was not active, and it came through, or the Attorney General's Office at that time was highly criticized for not activating this commission, and victims were calling our off, when I did become a senator, victors were calling our office quite frequently. So I want to thank them for the work that they have done. They were diligently going through all of the claims that had been made, and they asked us that we get the word out. And even more, to receive compensation as a victim under this statute, you have to suffer one of these violent crimes that are listed in 8 GCA 161.55. You do not have to have been, there doesn't have to be a case filed against the person who committed the crime, and there doesn't have to be a decision in any case against anyone for you to receive compensation as a victim. So I think that's very significant, and I'm proud of Guam for that and that we've been able to get federal funds for this program to continue it. So I want to thank Pauli Mike Crissostamo, who headed this commission for many years when it was revitalizing. Attorney General Elizabeth Barrett Anderson was the AG who revitalized this commission and now serves as its chairperson. Denise Manjola and all the other members of the commission, I want to thank them, and Attorney General, Deputy Attorney General Fred Nishihira, he's also been active since Elizabeth Barrett Anderson was the Attorney General of Guam. He had assisted with this commission, and they have staff that they pointed out that the hearing was very hardworking and able to really get all these claims done in a good time. And with that, I'd like to thank my colleagues for their support, including and other sponsors, including Senator Luhon, Senator Canata, Senator Tai Tegui, Senator Brown, Senator Sinagastin, and Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes. Sisus Masi to all of you and to my original co-sponsors, of course, Senator Sabina Perez and Senator Chris Barnett for their assistance with this bill. And again, I move that the bill be placed on, oh, sorry, on the motion.
On the motion to add the co-sponsors, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none, motion carries.
I move that the bill be placed on third reading for voting as amended by the committee and amended on the floor.
Thank you. On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none, motion carries. We're going to take a moment to recess at this time.
Majority Leader, Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sisus Masi, Madam Speaker, I move that we go back to motions.
On the motion to go back to motions.
Notwithstanding the House rules. Is there any objection? Seeing, there's an objection. All in favor of going back to motions, please raise your hand. Motion carries. We're back in motions. We're under motions. Senator Parkinson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. At this time, I would like to motion to move Bill number 9-37 COR, sponsored by Senator Duane Siniklas, an act to amend section 58.109 and 58.110 of chapter 58 and adding a new chapter, 58B, to Title X Division III Guam code annotated relative to the legalization and regulation of the use of consumer-grade fireworks. And I would like to add that to the second reading and add it to the end of the agenda.
On that motion, is there any objection? Is there any objection, Madam Speaker?
Not debatable. Any objection?
Madam Speaker, this particular bill, the committee report is not complete.
Do you have a point of order?
The committee report regarding the roundtable that's connected with these fireworks is not complete. It was not posted. We don't have that, 50% of that information on the website, so it's important that the public realizes and has the ability, the transparency that we all talk about.
Thank you, Senator.
Is on there. So there, I object.
Any on rules?
Yes, ma'am. I actually inquired with my committee director prior to coming down to session, and I was informed that both the committee report for Bill number 9-37, as well as the related committee report for the subsequent roundtable that was held relative to Bill 9-37 have both been completed and submitted.
Madam Speaker, point of information, I.
Please state your point of information, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, when we received the committee report last week, it did not include the roundtable in the committee report. So if the roundtable was just submitted in the last, what, day or two, that doesn't meet the open government law to allow five days. It was not included. And, and Madam Speaker, if I may, point of information, during the public hearing on this particular, just a point of information, that during the public hearing on this bill, it was clear that a roundtable would be held with all stakeholders involved to continue the conversation and the information needed, not only for the public but for the senators too as well. And this was not included to give the, that was not included, the roundtable to the five-day meeting, the five-day open government law.
Thank you for your point of information. We were informed by the clerks that both reports were submitted on July 14. Both the committee report and the roundtable report were both submitted. Please see the clerks if you're unable to find that on the website. So on the motion, there's been, is that an objection, Senator Tai Tegui? Okay, so there's been an objection to place Bill number 9-37 COR onto the session agenda. All in favor, please raise your hand. Placing Bill number nine on the agenda. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion fails.
Madam Speaker, I would like to reconsider the previous motion.
Please state your point of order.
You know, there's a, there's a motion on the floor that we consider. Senator Barnett is back, and we can at least move on that. Whatever other discussion they need to do, we can call a recess, but at least consider the bill first, and let's wrap it up. Thank you.
Senators, there's been a motion to reconsider the actions of the body in Bill number 9-37 COR. Is there any objection to that motion? Seeing no objection, motion carries. On Bill number 9-37 COR, the motion is that we, we are reconsidering the motion to place it on the agenda. There's been an objection. All in favor, please raise your hand. Senator Parkinson, you are recognized.
Madam, Madam Speaker, I would like to motion to move Bill 132-37 from the potential list to the second reading file for discussion.
There's been a motion to place Bill number 132-37 COR onto the agenda on second reading. Is there any objection?
Madam Speaker, if I may, point of information.
Do you have a point of order, Senator?
I have a point of information.
We're not going to debate the bill right now.
I'm not debating. I'm just giving a point of information, Madam Speaker.
Do you have a point of inquiry?
Inquiry? Okay. If you would like me to do an inquiry versus an information, I'll be happy to do that. Was the committee report during the time it was placed on the session agenda, was the committee report even prepared or provided to the Committee on Rules? That's my point of inquiry. Was the committee report for this particular bill provided to the Committee on Rules when we had the Committee on Rules meeting to place it on the agenda? That's my question.
Senator, please consult with the Committee on Rules. We're on a motion to place Bill number 132-37 COR.
Point of information, Madam Speaker, then, if I would, if I may.
Senator Tai Tegui, do you have a valid point of information?
Yes, I do.
Or are you trying to debate the bill?
I'm not debating. I'm just giving a point of information to my colleagues and the people that are listening today that demand transparency from this body, that this committee report was not given in time during the Committee on Rules meeting.
Objection, Madam Speaker. The Senator, Senator, Senator Tai Tegui was sent the information.
Senator Barnett, we're not going to debate this.
It was timestamped. I'm not trying to debate it, Madam Speaker. I'm just trying to defend the hard work of my committee.
Senator Barnett, Senator Barnett, Senator Tai Tegui stated her point of information. We are going to move on to the vote on the bill. The motion is to place Bill number 132-37 COR onto the agenda. Is there an objection?
There's an objection, Madam Speaker.
There's an objection. All in favor, please raise your hand.
There you go.
Motion passes. Are there any other motions under motion? Senator Parkinson, you are recognized.
I would like one more time to reconsider Bill number 9-37 and adding it to the second reading at the end of the agenda.
There's a motion to reconsider the actions of the body in Bill number 9-37 COR, and there's an objection. All in favor of the motion to reconsider, please raise your hand on the motion to reconsider. Motion passes. We're now reconsidering the actions of the body in Bill number 9-37 COR. The motion was to place it on the second reading. Is there any objection to that motion? There's an objection. So all in favor, please raise your hand to placing Bill number nine onto the agenda. Motion fails. All right. Are there any other motions? If not, then we are on the second reading on Bill number one. We're back on second reading. Senator Perez, you are recognized. We're under second reading. We're on Bill number. 35-37 COR.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place it on the bottom of the agenda.
On the motion to place Bill number 35-37 to the bottom of the agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're on Bill number 36-37. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place that on the bottom of the agenda as well.
On the motion to place Bill number 36-37 COR on the bottom of the agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on Bill number. Bill number 132-37 COR. Senator Parkinson, you are recognized. However, clerks, can you please confirm whether this bill is on the drive? It's been on the drive as a potential item. Does anyone require a hard copy? Okay, there's a request for two hard copies. All right, thank you.
Recession until we have the hard copies, Madam Speaker.
All right, we'll take one minute recess. All right, we'll take one minute recess.
We will not tolerate you being a problem. Many jurisdictions have escalators on certain types of crime that in their jurisdiction they deem to be particularly reprehensible. I think destroying people's water supply during a natural disaster is reprehensible. I think stripping our schools while they're closed and taking advantage of the chaos, that's reprehensible. Messing with critical gear so that workers cannot do the job that they need to do, that is reprehensible. And for these reasons, I, though I have it in my heart to err on the side of forgiveness, in this, we must take a hard stand that we will not allow people to get in the way of our recovery. Because these recoveries, they take long enough as it is. We don't need to be sabotaging our own selves and our own people. And so I ask my colleagues to support this with a heavy heart. Not proud of this legislation. I wish there was a different way, but I do believe it is necessary. With that, I ask my colleagues to support this measure. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator, and is there a motion?
I would like to make a motion to add this bill to the third reading file for voting.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, is there anyone who'd like to speak on the bill? Senator Kanata, you are recognized.
My name is Anhafri, colleagues, Madam Speaker. I rise in full support of this legislation. It is obviously unfortunate that we have to legislate such policy to, I guess, put more teeth into our response and recovery efforts. Obviously, we've seen the delay and we don't need any more further delay with the response of whatever resources our people need. We want to make sure that our equipment and whatever, um, our agencies are fixing and working tirelessly to do, those efforts aren't wasted, more or less the time is not wasted. So when individuals unfortunately have nothing else better to do but to wreak havoc on society, we have to ensure that there's teeth to bite them back when they're biting our, our, our resources. So with that being said, I rise in support of my colleague Will Parkinson and I ask to be the second co-sponsor on this legislation if possible. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Kanata. On the bill, anyone else like to speak on the bill? Senator St. Augustine, you are recognized.
Well, thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in full support of this bill. You know, during disaster, everybody is hoping that GPA shows up, Guam Water Works shows up, Public Works shows up. Three main, major agencies. And we have to legislate to stop the crime? Shame, shame, shame. I wish that we can a, add more teeth to this other than just felony, but maybe we, we can do this later. But I'm in full support of this bill. I just wish we had done this several terms ago. But it happened now and it's about time. We put some teeth and start protecting our folks, our first responders at GPA, Water Works and Department of Public Works, because they work hard. They work very hard to respond to the needs of the people of Guam. So we should respond accordingly. Thank you. And Senator Parkinson, if you can add me on the list, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, Senate, uh, Vice Speaker, you are recognized on the bill.
Promise I'll make it short, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand and rise in support of Bill 132-37COR as authored by the good Senator from Mighty. I, I do want to say that, uh, as the retiring speaker said, you know, it's a shame that, that, that we have to sometimes put into statute, um, punishment for those who destroy government property. You know, we here on Guam have always said that we've been such a resilient community. Every time there's catastrophe or, or crisis, that we are so resilient and that we always pull through, we always come together. And then there are those who don't have any, any regard for these government entities. And Madam Speaker, if, if, if we have to do it so that it's stated, so that it is noted to the community as a whole, that if you destroy any property owned by these entities who continue to try during, during trials and tribulations to bring the community back to resiliency, I want to say they deserve to get punished. If they violate, if they take, if they damage, if they mutilate, destroy maliciously, then they should be punished if they're caught. You know, Madam Speaker, we never used to have to do this before. As I said earlier, we never, we shouldn't have to legislate common sense. But if we don't put it in statute, then they'll just keep doing it over and over and over again. Some of them might think it's just a joke. So in that effort, Madam Speaker, I, I just want to say thank you to the good Senator from Mighty for at least stepping up to the plate, realizing the importance of these agencies and the equipment that they utilize to try to get the community back into shape or in, in, into some kind of, um, uh, support for them to, to come back, to do their daily lives and, and to operate so that our community can be, can be at, at, at rest or at peace. Those who damage it should get punished. And you know, yesterday, there was another legislation, I said, no, sometimes we just have to stick it to them. And these are one of those other legislation that shouldn't have to be mandated. But we're doing it because we have to make a statement and show that the enforcement and the teeth is there for those who literally, who literally maliciously destroy our government property, that it's use to take care of our community. Sisusmasi, Madam Speaker.
Sisusmasi, Vice Speaker. Senator Fisher, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Would the author of the bill, um, yield to a question?
Please state your question.
How does this bill in any way enhance, uh, standing law, crimes against the community, which is found at 9 Guam Code Annotated, uh, 43.31? This actually seems to limit, uh, the punishment that one would merit if they destroy public property and violate this law. I just, it's, uh, and I would just also addend that, um, you know, the proponent yesterday told us how, uh, he was helping to clean up the books, the Guam Code Annotated by removing superfluous and unnecessary statutes. Isn't he in fact cluttering the books by offering this unnecessary law since the punishment and the prohibitions are already contained within Guam law? Thank you.
Would the author yield to that question?
Uh, yes, Madam Speaker. Um, some of the provisions that are in here were actually came at the request at the Office of the Attorney General. They had found that the existing law was deficient and helping them in their mission to prosecute these crimes. And we adopted some of their recommendations, including the 90 days after the emergencies because they found that sometimes it wasn't exactly during the emergencies themselves, but after the event that some of these crimes were happening and it was, uh, this was a way to help them with enforcement, uh, of the law.
Senator Fisher, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, ma'am, that did not answer the question. How does this bill enhance, uh, those punishments and prohibitions found in 9 GCA 43.31? Will the, uh, author yield?
You asking him to, is that the same question?
It's not the, well, it's, it is the same question.
With the, on the, on the.
It is the same question, ma'am. I'm just looking for the answer.
All right. Senator Fisher, you have the floor.
Did he yield, ma'am?
No. No.
He won't yield to defend his own.
No, I won't yield.
Wow, okay. Uh, I mean typically, typically when one proposes a bill, Madam Speaker, uh, one is willing to defend it, but, okay. It, this is just unnecessary. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. Anyone else on the bill? Senator Blas on the bill, you are recognized, then Senator Luhan.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I appreciate, I understand the intent. First off, I, I, I must, you know, object to the process of how this was, was, was being put about with regard to, you know, the transparency and the openness that this body should have in the legislation they're about to deliberate on. That said, as I, in this deliberate process and in looking at this bill, I'm going, I'm going to go straight out to the bill. You know, Madam Speaker, while I, I appreciate the intent, I think this bill presents a number of different ambiguities that, you know, even as somebody who would, back in my law enforcement days, if I was asked to enforce this, I would have to ask a number of different questions in order to be able to establish the necessary probable cause to be able to make and effectuate an arrest. First off, I'm going to make reference to Page 1, Line 8. A person commits a felony. What kind of felony? First, second, third degree felony, what kind of felony? What kind of felony? First, second, third degree felony? What kind of felony? Is this going to be based on the discretion of who? Secondly, it talks about government property or public property. Then it says, property owned by GPA, Guam Power Authority, Guam Water Works Authority, Department of Public Works, and any, or any property, equipment used by first responders. Which first responders are you talking about? Because according to the statute, according to what we have, and as far as first responders, first responders goes beyond Guam Police Department, Guam Fire Department. So if we had a first responder within that emergency from outside the government entity, does that first responders now equipment? Now come the responsibility and the role, the possession of public government property? Next one is public emergencies. What's a public emergency? Because you can broadly define public emergency, and then if you broadly define that public emergency, you can just about put this for every other law, I mean, every other statute that we have in the book. And the last one, legislature may end the 90-day requirement by resolution before the end of 90 days. Why do we want to do that? then, we decide to do that, what kind of legal problems are we going to run into? First, we say enforce the law, then we say by resolution, don't enforce the law? I understand the intent of this legislation. I appreciate it. But this bill appears to me to be an open and broad discussion as to what it should Because then what are we going to say yes to? Are we going to classify this as the same felony as most other heinous crimes? Are we going to deem property and equipment owned by private entities who are, who've got the responsibility, or who can respond as first responders, as government property? Are we going to broadly define and provide that public emergency? Can define in many other ways? And then are we going to insert ourselves to say, after 23 days after the emergency, oh, this is no longer needed? And then something happens on the 24th and the 25th day? And you know, Madam Speaker, I could have taken the opportunity of being able to pose this question to you, to the author. But I decided not to, because if you can't yield to the question that was from the previous speaker on some very basic questions, why am I going to give him the opportunity to try to do this? Fix it. Fix it. I understand what you're trying to do. I understand what is being, what the author would like to be able to do here. I agree with it. But in the form, in the legislative form that it's in, to be codified and statute, too much ambiguity. Maybe we should take this back to the Attorney General, who said that wanted to be able to provide some teeth in statute to be able to go after this, and ask him for the language as necessary to be able to take away this ambiguity. I applaud him, the author, for wanting to do something about it, for raising issue, for bringing it up for discussion. I think, but in this discussion, we find that in this finality that it's in right now, it won't work. And it's going to cause more problems just to be able to define this. You know, Madam Speaker, you could take off your hat, and as an officer of the court, as well as another one of our colleagues here, look at this piece of legislation. I don't have a law degree. I'd love to be able to defend somebody who's going to be able to be arrested for this. But then I don't want to be the law enforcement officer who's going to be tasked, have to do something about it, and rely on this law, and look at it and it says, what is going to be the basis for me to effectuate the arrest? And will it stand in court? I just looked at this, and I'm like, nice intent. Missing a lot of stuff. So with that, Madam Speaker, I'm going to make a motion to move this back to committee so that the language can be, we can fix this language. The language can be fixed in this. So they can actually provide the teeth. Mouth's wide open, but it's got no teeth. I'd like to make a motion to move the bill back to committee.
There's a motion to move the bill back to committee, and there's been an objection. All in favor, please raise your hand. Three, four, five, six. Motion fails. Senator Luhan, on the bill, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, as the retiring Speaker had said already in regards to what has already been codified in law, and I'm just wondering, and again, nobody will dispute the fact that we all definitely want to see more penalties and more, again, more time done for folks who commit crimes, most especially during emergencies. But I'm just wondering if this bill would make it easier, because as 9 GCA 43.31 states all the, all these already, but I'm just wondering if you point out, if you just single out Guam Power Authority, Guam Water Works Authority, Department of Public Works, and any property or equipment used by first responders, if we just single them out, there are other GovGuam entities that may have properties that get destroyed, and if we don't also include them. And likewise, we know that this, this past storm, there was more theft and mutilation and stuff being done in the private sector than maybe in the, in the, in the government side. So I'm just wondering if this, if this law passes, if this bill passes into law, would it make it easier now? Would it nullify 9 GCA 43.1? And therefore, all destructions then during the emergencies and all that will be, will be nullified, other than if destruction comes to these three government properties and/or equipment owned by these properties? And that's, that's my question. I don't know the answer to that. And maybe, I don't know, the author may yield to that. And I'm just, again, my concern is that if this will nullify 9 GCA and make it easier, because I think all we, what we want is to make it even harder and more punishable, and maybe more time done if you're found guilty of that. But if this nullifies what is already in law, then we're making it easier and things to be other destructions or theft that would happen in other GovGuam agencies, or even the private sector, private homes and businesses and all that, that this will supersede that. I don't know the answer to that. And, can somebody answer? Yeah, I mean, I'm yielding to anybody who may have the answer to that.
Who are you asking to yield, Senator?
Maybe the author, maybe, yeah.
Would the sponsor yield to that question? No. Senator Luhan, you have the floor.
Okay. I mean, again, I don't think anybody in this body will disagree that we want more penalties for destruction of government property, of private entity properties, any properties, most especially when it comes to vulnerable, very vulnerable times. But because it's already been stated in 9 GCA 43.31, if this bill passes into law, does this weaken 9 GCA? And this will, will this supersede 9 GCA, and therefore be, only be applicable to the three entities that are stated in this? I don't know the answer to that. And if this nullifies 9 GCA, then we'll make all the other destruction of properties during emergencies and all that, what's already in statute will weaken it. And so, I, I, we don't, I think none of us want to weaken that. We want to strengthen the law. But does this weaken it? Does this weaken 9 GCA 43.31?
Are you asking the Senator to yield?
Yes, I, yeah, yeah, sure.
Would the author yield to the question?
Yes, I'll yield to the question.
Senator Parkinson?
The answer is no.
Senator Luhan, you have the floor.
Okay. It doesn't. Okay. I mean, that answers my question then. But it's still, again, when it says that these, these, these three entities, their properties and any equipment, what does that say about the other GovGuam entities who are not listed on here, and their properties may be damaged or pilfered? Yeah, yeah. And I'm just wondering, I mean, maybe if the body can take an opportunity to maybe even the author to read 9 GCA 43.31 and have us understand it completely, because we're going to ask to vote on it. And I know it said it doesn't weaken it, but maybe we should understand 9 GCA 43.31 before we move on. That's my request.
Are you asking for someone to yield, or do you want to read it yourself? What do you want to do?
Well, no, no, I mean, I'm asking for all of us to read it. We're going to be asked to vote on this. And I know the author, I know the author said it doesn't weaken it, but maybe we should, we should understand it. All of us should read it and understand it, and, and come to a consensus whether or not it does, and what does this do to, what does this do to 9 GCA? Because we're going to be voting on this, and if somehow this weakens 9 GCA 43.31, then we, we've just done the opposite than what this body wants to do, or intends to do. We just want to, we just want to make sure. We're getting asked to vote on something that I don't think any of us has a good grip on, on this. And like I said, a lot of the destruction, a lot of the theft that we, that we've had and destruction was done to the private entities, private homes. We heard of all these generators being stolen, bush cutters, and those are a part of, of, of bush cutters and chainsaws and things of that nature. So what does this do? And so I'm, I'm, I don't know how I'm going to vote on this at this point. And I'm going to read it again and understand it, and my version of the understanding will be the way I vote. And so I think the body needs a holistic understanding on 9 GCA versus what this can do to that. Anyway, thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, is there any other Senator who would like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Brown on the bill? You are recognized.
You know, it's unfortunate, Madam Speaker, and I have to say also, I'm going to state my objection again in my comments, because I have to tell you, this is unfortunate how we're trying to slam dunk legislation without meeting timeline requirements. And whether or not other members of this body think that that has been met to their satisfaction, the fact that others here believe that is not the case, I think those concerns should have been addressed. And I think the inability to answer some of the questions, or object to answer some of the questions that our colleagues have on this side of the aisle with regards to bill, again, I don't think that does anything to facilitate goodwill in wanting to support this legislation, even though I think the basis of it is, has a good intent in what we want to do. I mean, I think we've all seen the challenges our people have gone through. We've gone through them ourselves with this past typhoon, and many others that have come before this. And, you know, it's unfortunate that this is the way the dialogue is going. Colleagues, be careful with your power. You misuse it and abuse it, it gets taken away from you. And this is a very kind of stuff, and I've been around long enough to see this happen time and time again. We have been generous in our leadership, but we're not, we're not, it never reciprocates, you know? No good deed goes unpunished. And when we see this kind of stuff, when I see it, I've been around. The only one who served a term more than me is my good colleague to my left, who's just my neighbor up the road in Pago Bay. But when we see this kind of nonsense, this kind of childishness on the floor, it really doesn't speak well. And it really makes me really wonder if I even want to vote for this bill because of how it's been handled, and how it's been handled on the floor this afternoon. So those are the only comments I have to make. You can take them, leave them, do whatever you want to with them. But I think the public, unfortunately, has to see these type of displays. But they also should be aware of how legislation's being passed. Because you know what? Just because you have the votes to do it, is this the right way to do it? And is creating continued dissension among your fellow colleagues, especially on this side of the aisle, the way to proceed consistently, because we think, oh, we got it. You won't always have it, especially when you rely on our support to get your bills passed, to put you in positions of leadership. You just need to be mindful of that, because when you abuse it, you know, don't come knocking on our door and expecting that level of support when this is how we, also, who are representatives of the people of Guam, are being treated. With that, Madam Speaker, I have no further comment on this bill.
Is there any other Senator who would like to be recognized? Senator Tietzko, you are recognized on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good afternoon to my colleagues. You know, it's very unfortunate that the intent of this legislation is a good, good opportunity for us to do something for the community and protect the community as much as we can. Prior bill that we were talking about... Prior bill that we were talking about did just that. However, when we have a bill that's in front of us and when an author of a bill doesn't even do the homework or even finds, you know, answers questions on a bill, it makes me think, is this a political bill where I don't have to do anything? Show up at public hearings? I don't have to study? I don't have to put the work in? And I'll just rely on my colleagues on the left-hand side to vote for it anyways? Because it doesn't matter? Because I already got the votes? I mean, that's what it looks like. And if you don't think people are watching us, you're mistaken. We're on top of the guiding light, you know, right now when it comes to soap operas. This body, people are watching. And when somebody does not want to defend a bill or give the answers to questions we have as a body to completely understand it, then it sounds to me like somebody made a deal on the other side to get eight votes. I read the committee report. I was at the public hearing. I studied it. And I also remember a letter coming in from Homeland Security. The question was, was there any damage or property stolen at these agencies? And they said, none. But you know, it's not in the, I didn't see it in the committee report. I think it came after somebody emailed me. That wasn't in here. But if you read the committee report on the bottom, there are so many questions about this bill that does not help the intent of what we're trying to do. You know, Madam Speaker, it's important that this body pass bills that we don't have to come back a month or two months later or a year from now to correct, because we didn't do it right the first time. Every bill that's introduced by a Senator here needs to take the time to study, to understand it, to be the professional, to know exactly what this bill would do, how it will impact our community. And most especially, answer the questions of your colleagues. It is so frustrating. It's so frustrating being in here, going to all the public hearings, being at session, studying all these bills, and not having the same body or same Senators do the same and think that they can just make deals on this side and get this bill passed so my name will be in the newspaper? So people think I'm really working. Well, when you said no to a question, that's not working. There is a flaw in this legislation. And for the author to say, oh, it was the Attorney General that came to me and asked, I don't see a letter in here saying that at all. Your vote is precious in this body. And when you vote on something, you're voting on something that will help the community, that will do good for the community, that makes sense for the community, but most especially so that you can sleep at night, you know the due diligence was done on this particular bill to make a difference and not hinder the laws. How many laws out there that we've passed? That we, there's questions of, we go to court. And even judges have issues with certain laws because they were not written correctly. We don't need another crack in our judicial system for attorneys to go in there and debate it. And nobody seems to know what did the legislature intend for this? How do we follow the law when it's written so poorly? Madam Speaker, we cannot vote on a bill like this in good conscience. Can you sleep tonight if you vote yes on this bill? Or did you already make a deal? Shame on us if any of us did that. Shame on us. The people of Guam deserve more. They deserve better. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the bill? Senator Duane is on the bill. You are recognized.
Cesar Massey, Madam Chair. You know, I've been appreciating some of the comments from our colleagues. And the reason why, as I review the bill, 132, 37, is in absent of legislative intent, it's hard to ascertain the history or the purpose for which the bill was brought forward, maybe absent some anecdotal information or some information that's maybe provided in the media or the like. I mean, it's not to say certainly that there hasn't been from time to time, not just this most recent emergency with the typhoon Mawar, but even others prior to it, Madam Speaker. But really, it would have been very helpful to have the legislative intent explain what was put forward to kind of lead up to this in some more detail, so it would be a little bit more clear. So Madam Speaker, this time, I think it's important since, like my retiring Speaker mentioned, the Attorney General was kind of invoked in having led the effort with regard to this. So I would ask the author to yield to a question, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm making a request for the author to yield to a question.
Did you state the question?
Yes, since you have mentioned that the Attorney General has been the impetus to this bill being introduced and that not being contained at least in any sort of legislative intent and no legislative intent on this bill, do you have anything in writing, email, phone, text message, record, or anything to state clearly that the Attorney General asked for this and has approved of the language that has been placed in this bill?
Would the sponsor yield to that question?
Yeah, sure. If you look at the original bill, it was very different from what we have now. And after the public hearing where the attorneys from the Attorney General's office testified, we incorporated their recommendations and amended the bill.
Senator Duane, you have the floor.
So, yeah, I mean, I'll take that on the word put forward, and I'll review the committee report before I make a decision. But, you know, it's kind of interesting. Earlier, there was a discussion how some bills are drafted and they're kind of lazy in their draft. And I think I have to iterate very strongly that, you know, not having placed that in a substitute bill to the committee for the legislature, you know, I have to say that that's, in my opinion, very lazy statutory construction. Because that lays out the foundation on which and after which this is being presented. As a matter of fact, Madam Chair, I will review as to whether or not the incorporations are such that were adopted, simply because I would think that then you would send that back to the Attorney General and have them review what that was and the attorneys to see if that was actually the language and demonstrate that throughout the committee report with amended information. But I have to say, you know, sometimes we make, you know, observations on the floor here on how statutory construction goes forward. And sometimes we have to look at ourselves. Because this, without legislative intent, I think this is probably one of the laziest piece of legislation that I've ever seen assembled. Thank you, Madam Chair.
On the bill, is there any other Senator who would like to speak on the bill? Take a one-minute recess. Take a one-minute recess. Take a one-minute recess. As a matter of fact, Madam Chair, I will review as to whether or not the incorporations are such that were adopted, simply because I would think that then you would send that back to the Attorney General and have them review what that was, and the attorneys, to see if that was actually the language, and demonstrate that throughout the committee report with amended information. But I have to say, you know, sometimes we make, you know, observations on the floor here on how statutory construction goes forward, and sometimes we have to look at ourselves. Because this, without legislative intent, I think this is probably one of the laziest pieces of legislation that I've ever seen assembled. Thank you, Madam Chair. On the bill, is there any other senator who would like to speak on the bill? Take a one-minute recess. As a matter of fact, Madam Chair, I will review as to whether or not the incorporations are such that were adopted, simply because I would think that then you would send that back to the Attorney General and have them review what that was, and the attorneys, to see if that was actually the language, and demonstrate that throughout the committee report with amended information. But I have to say, you know, sometimes we make, you know, observations on the floor here on how statutory construction goes forward, and sometimes we have to look at ourselves. Because this, without legislative intent, I think this is probably one of the laziest pieces of legislation that I've ever seen assembled. Thank you, Madam Chair. On the bill, is there any other senator who would like to speak on the bill? Take a one-minute recess. As a matter of fact, Madam Chair, I will review as to whether or not the corporations are such that were adopted, simply because I would think that then you would send that back to the Attorney General and have them review what that was, and the attorneys, to see if that was actually the language, and demonstrate that throughout the committee report with amended information. But I have to say, you know, sometimes we make, you know, observations on the floor here on how statutory construction goes forward, and sometimes we have to look at ourselves. Because this, without legislative intent, I think this is probably one of the laziest pieces of legislation that I've ever seen assembled. Thank you, Madam Chair. On the bill, is there any other senator who would like to speak on the bill? Take a one-minute recess. As a matter of fact, Madam Chair, I will review as to whether or not the corporations are such that were adopted, simply because I would think that then you would send that back to the Attorney General and have them review what that was, and the attorneys, to see if that was actually the language, and demonstrate that throughout the committee report with amended information. But I have to say, you know, sometimes we make, you know, observations on the floor here on how statutory construction goes forward, and sometimes we have to look at ourselves. Because this, without legislative intent, I think this is probably one of the laziest pieces of legislation that I've ever seen assembled. Thank you, Madam Chair. On the bill, is there any other senator who would like to speak on the bill? Take a one-minute recess. As a matter of fact, Madam Chair, I will review as to whether or not the corporations are such that were adopted, simply because I would think that then you would send that back to the Attorney General and have them review what that was, and the attorneys, to see if that was actually the language, and demonstrate that throughout the committee report with amended information. But I have to say, you know, sometimes we make, you know, observations on the floor here on how statutory construction goes forward, and sometimes we have to look at ourselves. Because this, without legislative intent, I think this is probably one of the laziest pieces of legislation that I've ever seen assembled. Thank you, Madam Chair. On the bill, is there any other senator who would like to speak on the bill? Take a one-minute recess. As a matter of fact, Madam Chair, I will review as to whether or not the corporations are such that were adopted, simply because I would think that then you would send that back to the Attorney General and have them review what that was, and the attorneys, to see if that was actually the language, and demonstrate that throughout the committee report with amended information. But I have to say, you know, sometimes we make, you know, observations on the floor here on how statutory construction goes forward, and sometimes we have to look at ourselves. Because this, without legislative intent, I think this is probably one of the laziest pieces of legislation that I've ever seen assembled. Thank you, Madam Chair. On the bill, is there any other senator who would like to speak on the bill? Take a one-minute recess. As a matter of fact, Madam Chair, I will review as to whether or not the corporations are such that were adopted, simply because I would think that then you would send that back to the Attorney General and have them review what that was, and the attorneys, to see if that was actually the language, and demonstrate that throughout the committee report with amended information. But I have to say, you know, sometimes we make, you know, observations on the floor here on how statutory construction goes forward, and sometimes we have to look at ourselves. Because this, without legislative intent, I think this is probably one of the laziest pieces of legislation that I've ever seen assembled. Thank you, Madam Chair. On the bill, is there any other senator who would like to speak on the bill? Take a one-minute recess. As a matter of fact, Madam Chair, I will review as to whether or not the corporations are such that were adopted, simply because I would think that then you would send that back to the Attorney General and have them review what that was, and the attorneys, to see if that was actually the language, and demonstrate that throughout the committee report with amended information. But I have to say, you know, sometimes we make, you know, observations on the floor